Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Meeting dates, board training will be to be determined. And then our regular Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, August 20th. We're right here. In new business, the FY '25 tax rate. I'll turn it over.
Okay, and I put a couple of handouts at your tabletop that I just want to kind of call your attention to because I'm going to use those in my talking. And I know sometimes it's kind of nice to have that in front of you. And then it's nice to see so many people in our audience. I appreciate you all being here as well. And Andrea has put on the Hermitian Board a QR code that we'll have some handouts to. If you would like to access those yourself, by all means, you're welcome to. It'll also be on our website. I believe she's already got it on there too, so you can have that as well. So I will go ahead and get started. And I know there's a lot of information, but first of all, I put in front of you so if you can pull out your tax rate hearing notice. This is in draft form. Ted and I had had a conference call with our financial advisor and she prepared this for us. And so this is preliminary. And then she also shared this data with the state auditor's office, just to make sure everything looked, you know, accurate and whatnot. And they said that it did. Should this be the route that we go? But of course, at the very top, it talks about the public hearing. And so we will be having a public hearing. It'll be right before our August 20th board meeting at 5:45. That's here in the same building, in the same room. And at that time, that'll give an opportunity. I know we're here tonight too, but that'll be another opportunity yet for patrons should they want to, you know, say any, have any comments or any feedback. By all means, they're welcome to do so. So real quick, while we go through the tax rate hearing notice, I wanted to kind of just explain a little bit. And I know we all have different backgrounds and different history of dealing with this. But tax rates are figured annually. And basically, they're set to produce the amount of revenue that's needed from property tax to be able to manage our budget. Because as you know, we have to have a preliminary budget in July. And then we then would have to set our tax rate by September 1. And so what happens through the tax rate and why it's important is it looks at how much of our property tax funds are needed for the budget for this upcoming fiscal year, which began, as we all know, on July 1st. Okay? The tax rate is determined by dividing the amount of revenue that a district needs by the current assessed valuation. And we don't get assessed valuations. And of course, Hannibal School District is made up of two different counties, Marion and Rawls. We don't get those until mid-July because they're required to turn it into the State Tax Commission at that time, the two assessors from the two counties. So although we talk to our assessors and try to get an idea what they think it would be, it's not official until they submit that. And so they're making a guesstimate. And then the result of what that formula gives you is multiplied by 100. So then it's expressed in cents per $100 valuation. So that's just a little explanation of that. As again, Piper Sandler, our financial officer, prepared this for us. And I want to kind of go through this. It does caution you that when this is figured, it's figured at 100% collection rate. And typically in Hannibal, we have pretty good collection rate. It's usually in the, I think it was like 96%, upper 90%. So, you know, our taxpayers do a phenomenal job. And then also, there's usually some fees from the counties for the work that they do. And so that's not figured in here. So it'd be a little bit less than what this is looking at, but it gives you at least a little idea. Okay? So if you look down through here, this does include the accurate information that was submitted to the State Tax Commission. If you look in that middle section where it says assessed valuation, you can see it compares the '24, '25 school year based from last year. So if you look at real estate in comparison to last year, real estate assessed valuation was up about $3.5 million. Okay? Which is great. Personal property was a little bit different. So if you compare those two, it took an almost $11.6 million nosedive. So a lot less. As I've talked to other school districts around us, just superintendents, because we just got back from the commissioners' conference, that's been very common in Marion County as well as other counties. And there's a lot of ideals as to why that might be the case, you know, with cars costing more and things following the pandemic and people not buying those as much, or they're not available, one or the other. So that is significantly low, if you look at that. So overall, if you compare this year's assessed valuation, which is a key figure that the state auditor requires, when they're looking at telling you what your tax rate ceiling is, about $8 million less than what it was last year on our assessed valuation. So our assessed valuation was down $8,91,464 this year. And so, and look in that, you can see our overall assessed valuation is $372,475,354. Now, in addition to that, there's also new construction and improvements, which is directly below that. So that's new money. And you can see that was pretty good. The new construction was about $1.8 million. And so that's in there equally well. So what that all means, and I'm going to go down first before I tell you that, I got ahead of myself. If you look at the next section, it talks about what our tax levy is, then uses those figures to generate how much revenue we would get. And again, it's to support our budget, right? And so if you look, the incidental fund, the teacher fund, and they all go together. So you can see Piper Sandler put this as what our tax ceiling is for the operations this year. This year, the operation levy ceiling is set at $3.49. And so that's what she put in here. And again, this isn't official because you guys will have to vote on this in August, in our August board meeting. And then if you skip down to the debt service levy, because those are the two levies that we have, you can see that she figured that as $1.12. Because as we all know, we were just fortunate enough to have the support of our community of past proposition innovation. And we said that in our ballot language, that we were not going to change that at all. And we're not. And so we could have taken that up to about $1.22, but we're not going to do that because we said we weren't. We promised our voters that we weren't going to do that. So that's how she figured this. Now, if you look in that last section, what that means is if the school board chooses to not roll, excuse me, not take advantage, or I don't know however you want to say that. If they want to continue to roll back, we're going to generate with this new information about $56,000 of additional money for next year. If you skip down, it says new revenue from recovering the voluntary rollback. Because this is, you know, 2025 is what we're figuring this for, for an odd number. This wasn't a reassessment year. We can reclaim some of the voluntary rollback that we've used in the past. And if we did that, similar to what she has said, that would generate about another $1,343,000... Let me get my glasses on. $891, sorry about that. So you'll see that would be the new revenue, about $1.4 million. And of course, that's if we did this. That's yet to be determined. So I just wanted to share that with you. We have to publish this by law 10 days in the newspaper and some other public places so our community knows what we're considering doing. And then ultimately, the night of the board meeting, that's when the board will have to make a decision on what route they want to go. Okay? So I just wanted to share that with you, just so you're familiar with that. And then I also included for you, and it's a lot of information. And this is what's in the QR code for our audience if they would like to look at it. But basically, compiled kind of a question-answer kind of thing, different questions that have been posed to me, some of which you all have shared have been posed to you, just to try to get the facts out there. Because I know it's a very complicated issue, excuse me, complicated issue. And we want to make sure everyone understands to the best of their ability of what that is. So if you look at that, I'm not going to go through every bit of that with you because I want to let you all have an opportunity to ask any questions that you have. But I do want to highlight the different questions and just a few things from that document with you. If you look, obviously, probably the biggest change this year, and I know I shared this previously back in March, is inflation. And I think we all know that from our homes, has increased a lot. That's been a big factor. Our assessed valuation has gone down a little bit and our student attendance. And I know I talked a lot about that with our budget, preliminary budget and things like that. And I know we, as I mentioned, we just got back from a meeting. And I know a lot of public school districts are dealing with many of those same factors. And they're kind of dealing with the same things. The cost of living, which they call it a consumer price index, that's another terminology that the state auditor uses, is used to determine what the state tax ceilings are for both operations and debt service. And this year, according to what the state auditor said, it was at 3.4%. Where in the past, it was around 1.9%. So that's something that the State Tax Commission releases. So to collect taxes above the maximum tax ceiling, we would have to go to the voters within our school district boundaries and ask them to approve any tax increases. And we're not, I'm not going to recommend that. We're not needing to do that. And so what the other aspect of looking at our tax rate is really something that's driven by the Hancock Amendment. And the Hancock Amendment was from a senator back in the 80s that basically wanted to have some legislation to protect patrons so that public entities couldn't increase their taxes some exuberant amount of, you know, without the voters having to say so. So there's a formula which is used for that that shows that it's about a 5% increase. If you have that, that's when that kind of goes into effect. So school districts have kind of a maximum levy that they can utilize. For our district, and it was back in the early 90s when this was done, and it was in '96, it's $3.75 for the operations. So that's just a little, I'm probably giving you too much information, but I just wanted you to share that. So that is there. If you look down below, there's a number of frequently asked questions. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I do think, I hope you feel like it has some good information. I put on here, what is our current operating and debt service levies? And so you can see what those are. What is the difference between an operating levy and a debt service levy? I think that gets confusing. I know I talked a lot about that when I was out talking about proposition innovation, just because I know that can be confusing. You know, debt service is solely for debt. And operating is for everything else. You know, the things that you have. And really, operating levy is the levy that we have the biggest struggles with at this time. So both of those have distinct purposes. And there are ways that you can cross boundaries with funds, but there are very strict guidelines that the state has in which school districts can do that. And our auditors make sure that we're abiding by those state guidelines as we're audited by an outside agency every year, every school district is. How is the issue separate from proposition innovation? This is, so we're really talking predominantly about the operating tax levy, even though the debt service tax levy is there as well. We've already told, as I mentioned earlier, that the debt service levy, we're not going to take it any different than $1.12. I won't recommend that. I know you all don't plan to, because that's what we told the taxpayers in our ballot language. So therefore, that's kind of, that decision's kind of taken care of. It's more the operation levy that you guys are, that we're going to have to think about. So how is the operation levy set? There's some information in there, and it goes into more detail about the Hancock Amendment, which you can read up about that. Our, as I mentioned, our assessed valuation this year is down about 2.59%. It's at the top of the next page. Let me look through here real quick. So the operating levy ceiling is what was issued by Piper and Sandler, as well as the State Tax Commission, is $3.49 for this fiscal year '25. And then the debt service ceiling is $1.24. So really, if we wanted to, and I'm not proposing that we do, we could increase up to 4.73 based on the Hancock Amendment if we so chose. I'm not recommending that at all, but that's just how that's set up. Okay? So really, the Board of Education, you guys are going to have to determine, you know, if you can set the tax rate based on either your fiscal year '25 tax levy ceilings, which we just talked about, or the maximum authorized levy, which I mentioned earlier, is 3.75, whichever one is lower. Okay? I'm just kind of skimming down through here, and then I certainly don't want to do all the talking. Yeah, please. Yeah, absolutely.
So, to make it clear, the state auditor calls sets that for every time?
Yes. They start out, it's called a pro forma sheet. And basically, they use last year's assessed valuation, and then by that time, they have this year's assessed valuation. We don't even know what it is until we receive that from the state auditor. And there's a formula which is basically plugging in information. And what I've done over the years since I've been superintendent, and other superintendents do this too, is it's called Form C, which is what they figured that out with, is giving that to, you know, whatever organization you're working with. In this situation, Piper Sandler. And they fill in, you know, the blanks with the data that you're supposed to do per the state auditor. And then she even took it one step further and went ahead and took that completed sheet that she had done to the state auditor, just to make sure she didn't make any errors or anything like that. Because that wouldn't be anything any of us would want to do. And then she called Ted and I, and she reviewed this with us. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions before we get going on from anybody here? Okay. Number seven, this is kind of the part you don't want to talk about, and this is kind of where we're at. If we can't generate enough money to support our budget that has been approved, we're going to obviously have to make cuts. And so as we mentioned before, that would be around $1.3 million in cuts. And that's never a fun thing to have to do. I know that we have already made some significant cuts with personnel. And I'm not saying that they weren't necessary or acceptable, because with our attendance numbers going down a little bit, it was okay. But we didn't have to, you know, no one had to lose their job or anything like that. And so those are going to be some tough decisions that we'll have to make as a board. And you know, they can be anywhere, you know, and these are really unpleasant things. But, you know, looking at additional staff reductions, we know we're a participant in the career ladder program, and that's a cost. And we love having that because it helps reward our teachers for helping our students outside of the time that they normally are already doing that. I know that the parent pay daycare, we provide that. That is a huge help to many of our staff who, many wouldn't be able to work necessarily if they couldn't find adequate childcare. And so that would be difficult, but that could be something. And of course, these are things that you guys would have to help us determine. Some school districts are adjusting the percentage of staff benefits that the board pays. Of course, we pay 100%. I say we, the Board of Education pays 100% of your health, vision, hearing, insurance, excuse me, can't talk. And some school districts have to reduce that just with rising costs of that. Again, I'm not saying that that would be done, but these are all things that could be looked at. You know, a lot of school districts are reducing their extracurricular programs that they're offering. And we, as you heard Clint say, we've had some phenomenal success. Our kids are very, very talented. I know that would be very difficult to do. And some school districts have even started implementing participation fees. Again, none of these are desirable. Some people have been looking at the four-day school week to cut down options. That one I'm always concerned about, even though I know it sounds favorable to people, is because, and as I talked to other school districts, it's the childcare portion, you know, because parents many times, obviously, are still working and they need someone to care for their children if school isn't in session. So those are just some examples. How will setting the current tax rate without a rollback benefit our school district? You know, probably the biggest thing, it's going to help us to keep our district offering a quality education to our students and making sure that we're providing the income to our staff so that we can have a full staff and have a quality staff. Because they have cost of living increases as well. And you know, this year, as you know, we really couldn't give much of an increase. We just did the rollover. And so that would be difficult. We also included some information that's embedded in this on how this would impact the average taxpayer, how much would it cost you? And I encourage everybody to look at that to see, you know, what that additional tax revenue would look like. And then I know some questions says, why aren't we just hearing about this? I think that was even mentioned last board meeting. And so I went back with the help of some other people and just looking back. But we've been talking about this for a while with the rollback. And I've even talked with other districts too. And just going back, and this is kind of through here, but I know we talked about it in fiscal year '23 at the August tax rate hearing as well as other times. And some of you guys were on the board, some of you weren't. At that time, you know, it was a reassessment year. And we, you know, we rolled back the tax rate fiscal year '24. We talked about it during that time. And the problem is, because you can only adjust or recapture your voluntary rollback every other year, whatever we do this year impacts next year too. So that's something to keep in mind. We also talked about it on March 14th. Matter of fact, we put out a press release, and I had Andrea embedded that in there for us so we could have that. And in that, I put, based on the increase in operating costs, it's recommended that the rollback be reevaluated, which is what we're doing. And I know I was very careful when we went around, when I went around, and I know many of you too, to talk to patrons about proposition innovation, making sure they understood on the ballot language, we were solely talking about the debt service levy only and keeping that clarified. And then I know when Piper Sandler was here for the presentation of the bond sales in June, I know the recommendation that our financial advisor has also been that we need to reconsider that just because of our operations. This past school year, we eliminated 22 positions through resignations, retirements, and transfers, and we cut $2.4 million from last year's budget in going into this year. So when people ask, what have we been doing to address this issue? That's an example of those things. We're also working with a lot of our community organizations and with student attendance. And I know there were some policies that the board was given by the high school a couple of months ago about looking to ways to encourage students to have more regular attendance so that we can teach them. Almost done. Number 10, could we roll back this year and reevaluate next year after seeing this coming year's revenues? And you can see, we can't recapture next year if we roll back this year because it's on that two-year cycle. That's the way it's set up. And we have had recommendations from our financial advisor, MoCat, which is the financial investor for our bond sale, DESI School Finance, and then of course, our auditor is saying this is something we need to reconsider. And then I really want to point out that next to the last paragraph on that page, the state formula is fully funded this year. And we do worry about, you know, from year to year, because that never does, you know, always clear through. But the paragraph below that, this is the part that really concerns me, not that all these others don't, is, you know, the State Department of Education requires school districts to have a minimum of 3% reserve balances in order to not be considered financially distressed. And so we ended this past school year with about a 4.75% reserve balance. And so if you remember back in 2015, when we had the Prop C waiver bond issue, the board at that time had wanted to establish a goal that we try to maintain our reserve balances between 20 and 25%. And so that's just something we're going to have to be really careful of because that is a definite possibility. So I know I've talked a lot, and I don't want to have to do all the talking, but I want you guys to be thinking about, this is an opportunity for questions to be asked. If there's additional information that's needed, to ask for that. And anything else that comes to mind. So, and I know we probably maybe have some people in the audience that maybe want to visit as well. But Blaine, with that being said, I'll turn it over to you.
I thank you. First of all, so if we decide not to, decide to roll back and stay where we're at and in the operating, we would only be able to obtain $56,000?
Can you turn your microphone on?
$284, $56,284, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then we would have to make up $1.3, $1.4 million in this, with this budget?
Yeah, we're going to, with the new construction, we will generate, and I'm kind of repeating what you just said, Blaine, $56,284 in new revenue. If we don't recover the voluntary rollback that is, that we have, if we don't utilize the ceiling or something close to it, then we're going to have to figure out $1.1,343,891 to shave that out of our budget.
This year?
This year.
Okay. Discussions?
How much is projected to come in from the state? How much more of that percentage is going up?
It is going up with the student adequacy target going up. Do you have that amount in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me. It was in the preliminary budget. The issue is with our weighted ADA, because the pandemic provision's down, it went from around 2,500, I'm sorry. It dropped about, I don't have the figures in front of me, but it dropped about, well, hold on, give me a second, I'll pull that up, I can tell you. Anyway, the weighted ADA went down significantly. So even with the increased state adequacy target, it'll actually cause less revenue from the state or very little difference. Now, we got the July payment, and I've had some comparisons on that, but we actually had to wait till August to see what those figures are going to be because of July 1. I actually just talked to David Trammell from DESI, he's in the Office of School Finance. So we're still waiting on some information. Hold on just one second, I can tell you the difference in those numbers.
Now, back in April, I think the state actually changed the formula and went from a WADA, the weighted daily average, to an enrollment metric to use for their funding.
Partially, yes.
And changed it partially a little bit. So we were kind of happy about that because it'd be more stable. And they also appropriated quite a bit more money toward it through the state. And so you guys provided this, and I don't know where they went or what they were, but you provided us an estimate, I think from Piper Sandler, about the state funding for this next upcoming year. It looked favorable, so it'd be good to hear what that was. I don't, I didn't bring my other stacks of stuff we had from before, but...
He'll grab that for you here in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you remember before, you know, when they were figuring student attendance, it was solely from, it wasn't student enrollment necessarily, how many kids are enrolled in your district.
Right.
How many of our students who are enrolled are attending 90% of the time or more? And if you remember, because sometimes that would be very difficult, as you can imagine. And that was what the problem was. And I know that even with some of the policies that Jason Nolan had brought forward, it was kind of trying to make that in line with what this new is. So Jeff, what you're saying is now they're going to not make it totally on that. They're going to try to adjust that to where it's not 100% just based on that factor, which will be helpful.
They had the WADA times the SAT times the DVM minus the local effort and all that stuff for that state formula. What percentage, I remember looking at that before and thinking a fairly high percentage of the revenue total for the district was coming from the state formula. Other states don't have, I guess, quite as high a percentage coming from the state as particularly we do. But you guys remember the breakdown of how much is coming from?
How much is coming from state versus federal?
Well, the federal's been higher, especially through COVID, but our local effort versus the state funding.
Yeah, that was in the graphic that we had on the budget last time.
I know that in the past, and don't quote me to this because we'll have to look at our budget that we shared with you guys, but I know it's been around 47% from the state and then about 47% from the local and the remainder being federal. And I know if you look over the years, and I remember saying this even when we did our preliminary budget message, the amount of, the percentage being asked by the locals is increasing. You know, it's becoming off balance. And that varies from district to district because assessed valuation, of course, plays into that as well as student enrollment.
About, on the budget graphic, about 35% state operating revenue, about 56% local, about 9% federal was what we are projecting, or that was what was...
That's what Piper Sandler gave us last time.
So you just... That was in our budget, preliminary budget document that we provided last time. That was the figures that we're estimating for this year.
So you said 35% was from the state formula?
Yeah. 35% for the state, 56% for the local.
Local. And then the rest of it was being made up by the Fed?
Correct.
So 9% by the Fed.
I'm turning my microphone off and on because I get feedback, so I'm sorry.
I've got a quick question. Jeff, as long as you're done.
Yeah, hold on, one, no, one second.
Okay.
Our teachers are under contract. So how are we going to do staff reductions if we do, if we have to? I mean, that, as I look at that, that's our number one thing, staff reductions and discontinuing career ladder. I know you didn't prioritize this, but with people being under contract, how are we going to cut their contracts?
We're not able to because of contracts, but there are other things that we could do, again, being creative. For example... For example, we have to hire subs, we could use people in different ways to take up for other positions. Some of those things would have to be explored as well. And of course, we have probationary teachers and we have, you know, tenured teachers or permanent teachers, sometimes it's called. And so that would be a difference there as well.
What's the amount of career ladder that would save us if we cut that?
We looked at that.
A local portion of career ladder is about $350,000, so that would just be one of the things that we would have to, we'd have to chunk other things in with it. I looked, if we did about 25% of benefits to staff, that would be close to the 1.4 million, but that makes about $26,000, $2700 out of pocket for staff who already didn't get a raise this year.
Right now with career ladder, the state pays 60% of it and then the local school district pays 40%. So our 40% is around $350,000.
Go ahead, Ron.
Ted and Susan, I want to make sure I'm reading some of these numbers right. If we raise from 304 to 349, which is approximately 44, 45 cent raise, that's, if my calculations are correct, that's about a 13% increase in taxes. That's pretty significant. Like I said, I'm not a mathematician, but I'm, I'm pretty sure my number is correct. I don't, I don't know how comfortable the public is with hearing they're going to get a 13% tax raise. I've talked to several people in the past few weeks. Some are friends, some used to be friends.
That happens, buddy.
Yeah, I, I knew, I knew what I signed up for, but you know, you can't please anybody.
You'll have less and less pretty soon.
Yeah, yeah. But I think, I think that's, you know, the public, they see that 13%. Anytime I see anything that says 13% increase in something, I'm a little, red flags are going up.
Ron, I think that's an appropriate thing to say, and I know one of the links in this handout that we've given you has a cost table. And to kind of put it in numbers, because I know it's just, I don't know how everybody thinks differently, so I'll just use one example. So if you had a $200,000 home, you know, I know everybody, it varies, you know, whatever that is, that if we were to resume about 35 cents of our rollback, which we had, had not used last year, that would cost that taxpayer about $133.57 for the year and $11.13 a month. So and it's broken down anywhere from, depending on the price of your home, 50,000 all the way up to 500,000. If you had a $500,000 home, it would be $333.93 a year additional and $27.83 a month, you know, depending on what your, what your home value is.
Okay.
So just, I don't know if that helps you, but it helps me sometimes to think like that. But that is included in, embedded in that document so people can look and see, you know, whatever their home cost to kind of see what that would look like for them.
Okay. I'm going to kind of let the cat out of the bag why most people are attending tonight, including myself. When we were told about the bond issue, I'm not a tax expert, I don't know if anybody in here is, but when the public was told no tax increase, I thought they meant no tax increase, not just on the bond issue. The calls I've received from people that said they feel like it's the old bait and switch where the public was told one thing and now all of a sudden we're putting a tax on them and saying, oh, no, it wasn't about the bond, this is a different tax. I don't, I don't believe the public was aware.
Well, if you remember, we talked about that as a board and that was a concern that we had way from the beginning, and I'd even recommended, yes, doing a proclamation or something so that that didn't happen. But that, for whatever reason, that didn't take place. I was also, and I know I feel like I'm repeating myself, I also was very careful, and we talked about this as well, too, to make sure that when we were talking about proposition innovation, to be sure to talk about the exact ballot language and that we were talking about the debt service levy, levy, excuse me, and that the school levy consists of two parts, operations and debt service. The debt service levy would not, and, and actually, to be exact, I even pulled it out just to, you know, make sure my, my memory was correct, even though I knew it was, shall the Board of Education of the Hannibal School District, Missouri, without an estimated increase in the current debt service property tax levy, borrow money for the purpose, and it told all the reasons why we were wanting, how we were wanting to utilize that money. If this proposition is approved, the adjusted debt service levy of a school district is estimated to remain unchanged at $1.12 per $100 of assessed valuation of real and personal property. So.
I, I mean.
I understand.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm a simpling. I didn't, I thought no taxes meant no taxes. I think most of the public thought that as well. And I feel that some of them felt like that liar, liar, pants on fire. And I know that's why a lot of people are probably here tonight. Like I said, it's a tough decision that, that we have to make, but we also got to consider the taxpayers, their input on it, too, because I feel like many of them felt wronged, felt lied to. Actually, about everyone I've talked to has said that same thing so far. I just want us to take that into consideration that our patrons are being told the truth or, or maybe, maybe we could have worded it differently, that hey, there could be a tax increase somewhere here, but that, no, it's not the, it's not the bond issue, because I really truly don't think the public was aware.
Well, I've had people that have accused me of lying about it, even in, in this room, and, you know, it wasn't lied about, and I'm not trying to get sideways with you on that. I understand it is very confusing. And that is the sole reason why, as a board, we talked about that at great length many times, because I knew that that could be very confusing, because I'm like you, it is confusing. Until I ever got into administration, I never understood all that. And I understand how confusing that can be.
I think one of the things that we said when we were talking about this was if the bond issue passed or didn't pass, we were still going to be talking about the operating levy, no matter what. So if it didn't pass, we still were going to talk about it. If it did pass, we still had to talk about it, because they're just two distinctly different things.
We cut, go ahead.
I agree that that's what we said, but on all of our publicity that went out, it said no tax increase, is what it said. And so that's what the public hears.
Well, the ballot that was in the ballot box, everybody had the same.
I know, I know, but what we were promoting was there was no.
Can you turn on your microphone? What do you think?
There was no tax increase was on the, all of our publicity, our, our little banners and everything. That's what the public saw. And they put their support behind it, and I'm glad they did.
Well, I'll have to go back and look at all those things. It never was brought to my attention by anyone.
What, what it appears is that we're saying one thing and we're doing another thing. And I've always operated underneath the principle that a good name is rather be chosen in great riches and loving favor than silver or gold. And so if I'm going to have a good, good name, I've got to support what we said and what people are understanding that we were telling them, no tax increase. So as far as where I am, I think we need to figure out what departments overspent, how much they overspent, and shore up our budget, make some cuts, and keep our word of no tax
I was looking back at a couple things from the previous meetings, and one of the things that I think is a really fortunate thing that we did with the, particularly the, the bonds that we already issued, was that we used the portion of those bonds, about six and a half million, to pay off a, a, basically a bond series that we had done through, through a lease purchase arrangement. Because there was a balloon payment coming due, I think in '25, that was really going to screw up the cash flow. And so that was a, a big impetus as part of the considerations to consider raising a tax levy. But with the $30 million bond issue and us taking, you know, we issued about 14 million and change of those, I think, recently, and then took six and a half, six and a half million and paid off that series, like 2020 lease purchase bond. So that got rid of that balloon payment coming due in '25. I think we've got another one coming due on the other series in '27, if I remember. So that's going to be, have to be dealt with based upon the financials that we did back in the early, I think those were issued in '20 and '21. And when I was thinking about that, I had some questions stemmed back from that. During the COVID and the ESAR funds, we received about $13.3 million of COVID funds that we weren't expecting to get over the last few years. And in some communications from Blaine and with one of his financial people he was talking to, one of those things, he said about 90% of those funds were spent on salaries, which are ongoing commitments for limited duration funds. And so, do you have any comment on that?
What's the question, I guess?
The question was, did we actually spend 13.3, 90% of the $13.3 million we got unexpectedly from COVID funds on salaries, which are sort of ongoing commitments?
What we did is we spent the lion's share of ours on HVAC, which was an allowable expense for those funds. And then with any of the funds that we, we did receive, we used, that had to be used on personnel or something like that, we used that to, to pay those. They weren't new positions. They were positions that we were going to be paying anyway. Some of them were new, a handful of them, but very few of them. Some school districts, I know, put it in their salary schedule and things, and I, I, like you, I thought, I don't think that's a wise idea.
Blaine, can you comment on that? You had a friend of yours who's a financially savvy fellow that you were communicating with me about a little bit as well. Can you tell me a little bit about what your friend informed you when he was going through the books?
Say the whole thing again, Doc, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I wasn't following everything.
Sorry about that. It's okay. When your friend was going, you had a friend who was financially savvy, I could probably go back and dig around and find his name, but you had him reviewing some of our finances there, back when some of this was kind of brewing about the missing money and the budget shortfalls and all that. And one of the things that your friend, he communicated to me, had told you was that about 90% of the COVID funds were, were used towards salaries. Do you remember that?
I, I don't remember that off the top of my head.
Do you remember the fellow's?
No, I did ask if we had hired anybody with COVID funds and those, that would be a ridiculous thing to do because it was an ongoing thing. And I remember asking if all of the COVID funds that were used, are those people or positions now gone?
Right, so I think the fellow's name was Neil Branham. Do you remember Neil Branham?
Yeah, Neil's with LJ Hart, right. I don't remember if it was 90%. I don't remember. I can, I can ask Neil again, I can go back and ask him again, I just don't remember if I, that, if Neil said that or if it was used for paying, paying people, paying into the operating levy or not. I, I just don't, I don't recall that. And it, it's very possible that Neil could have said something like that to me, I just don't remember that. But I can ask him.
Okay, that'd be good. Some of the school districts just.
Did you say, did you say 90 or nine?
90.
Okay.
So I can find it in a while, but I don't have time to dig through all that stuff. Some of the school districts, we're looking at comparative data from district to district, have large reserves right now because the COVID funds enabled them to actually have a lot of financial pressure removed from them, but that's not the case here. That was before I was on the boards, I don't know what went into all those decisions, but when you have $13.3 million, it falls in your lap unexpectedly. It would be nice if you have a little reserve at this point instead of, instead of being kind of a little more tight at the present time. I looked back through a Muddy River News article that quoted you, Susan, back from July, and it said that the projected funds from the state would be 38% for our district this year, local would be 45%, and the feds were going to contribute 16%. So I don't know, that was probably right after that conversation we had. So similar, but slightly different, the local percentage was smaller. The bulk of our funds, more than 50% would come from state and federal in that case, but local's still an important piece to that, so.
So back to the 13.3 million, I just want to make sure I understand your question. So are you, are you, what are you implying? What are you wanting me to, to, what data are you wanting, I guess? I don't know about Blaine's friend, I just know about the district. So just help me to know what question you have.
Well, I was.
So I can get that for you.
I was trying to get a sense of where the COVID funds went. And so when Blaine was telling me about his conversation with Neil Branham, who you know well from LJ Hart, we've been working with him for a lot of years, so he was analyzing it and said, hey, you know, here's some issues, a lot of this money was spent on salaries, apparently. So I never had a conversation with Neil, so I don't know that for a fact. And I wasn't on the board at that time, but if so, that would be potentially, you know, we had a chance to look back through the revenue streams and since 2017, you know, the amount of local tax revenue that's been fed into the district has increased by 38%, which is fairly substantial. And do you have any comparative data on the salary scales that we have for our local staff versus state averages or national averages?
Yes.
Yeah, can you tell me about that a little bit?
Well, I know, I can't just regurgitate that to you. I mean, that's a lot of data, but what I will tell you, and I think I would share with you guys, and this is why I want you guys to always tell me what you're wanting so I can provide that. I just, I don't know how I would have that committed to my memory. I will tell you, our staff, when you're talking about certificated staff, in comparison to those in our conference, those conference districts, as well as our neighbors, we're not the highest and we're not the lowest. And I know that's an arbitrary, it's about the best I can tell you because that's a lot of information, as far as as a district it's about. Looking at across the state, because I've looked at every single school district in the state of Missouri, all the way from big districts to little, and of course, it varies. And we fill out MSTA, and I know NEA both do salary schedule collections from school districts and provide us a really good data source that we're able to use. I use that with the Salary and Welfare Committee as we're looking at that. Now, one area in addition to that, as we've talked, we've said that right now our base salary is over the $40,000, which is the minimum that's going to be required for this upcoming year, but as we move forward, it's going to go up. But one area in addition to that I have concerns for where we are not, I don't think waging well comparatively to our neighbors or in our conferences in support staff. Our support staff is, is low, they are low on the salary schedule, and so that is a concern. And of course, that makes up a large portion and very important portion of our school district as well. So if there's any of that data that you want, if I know about it, I'd be happy to provide it.
Some data was communicated to me that they said was from DESI, that showed that our average staff salary was about 9% over state average, you know? I didn't verify that and get on DESI, but that would be important information, I think, for us to know. And maybe that we have more long-term teachers who are tenured or more staff that's more credentialed or something than, than average, but it'd be nice to know some comparative data with that.
Oh, you got to ask and I'd be happy to provide that. Thank you. I will get that for you.
Okay.
I just texted Neil.
Okay, great.
Just something I wanted to mention, I think is kind of important. If we want to continue to offer an excellent education here at good old Hannibal School District, I thank goodness that we are a little bit above other schools so we can attract the best teachers. Just my opinion, but I think it's something that is kind of very important to the success of our district.
And I think if we don't increase the taxes, our teachers, our students, and our support staff are going to be the ones that feel it the most. We're not going to get teachers, we're not going to keep teachers, we might not have enough teachers for our students, we can't offer programs for our students. I mean, our teachers work hard and making over $40,000, that's not much in this day and age. So our teachers, our students, our support staff, they're going to be the ones that are hurt if we aren't able to increase the taxes.
Looking at some of these cuts, I mean, I'm looking at the four-day school week and the hardship on families and the childcare options that we already have, that is going to decrease some of the hours that our families are able to work when our families are already struggling. I've been into communities where they already have four-day school weeks and families are not able to support their, their, their families and their children, they're having childcare issues already, so I'm concerned about that as well and some of the cuts that we're making. And I know we, there's, I talked about there, there was no tax increase, but it was spelled out, you know, what, what tax we were talking about. So I understand that also, but you know, it, in the ballot language, it says, and talked about that explicitly. So I see, I definitely see both sides, but I am concerned about some of the cuts that would be. would be made. So I'm going to go and I'm going to look at all of this information and just kind of digest it and, and make up my mind.
I, I was wondering, has anybody been contacted by the public about wanting us to raise their taxes? Because no one, no one's contacted me.
No one wants their taxes raised.
Right. But that's, but here's the thing, though. This is, we got to represent the community as we're having this conversation too. If there was an overwhelming outcry outside of the district, outside of employees of the district, of whether we should raise taxes or not, then we should listen to the community because they need to be heard too.
I also think like, I think I'm starting my ninth year on the board. Since I've been on the board, we have rolled back every time. So I mean, we, we, we've been-
We, we, we rolled back, but we, we have raised taxes.
But we need that steward. So maybe when we need money, it's-
And a matter of fact, I got that data. In nineteen twenty, we rolled back almost seventy-five cents. In twenty twenty-one, we rolled back ninety-nine cents.
Well, but that's misleading though.
In twenty-one, twenty-two, we rolled back sixty-eight cents. In twenty-two, twenty-three, fifty cents. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, forty-six cents.
Right. That's kind of misleading because when the, the public hears roll back, they think, we're here and we rolled the back, back the taxes from here. But we have a ceiling, so we're, we're rolling it back from the ceiling.
And why do, and that's where-
And we actually increased taxes last year.
That's where I think it's really important to understand why there is a ceiling. And the ceiling, as I mentioned before, is why the auditor puts it there to make sure that you have the same revenue stream coming in. Because assessed valuations and consumer price index are going to fluctuate from year to year. And so it's, I always use this example because in my mind, it makes sense. It's almost like a pan balance. If your assessed valuation goes up, then your ceiling's going to go down. Because again, they don't want you to, to take more than you can. If your assessed valuation goes down, your ceiling's going to go up. I, I looked and I tell you, and, and again, there's almost no school districts our size. Matter of fact, I could only find one that was our size that rolled back taxes. Palmyra does. They rolled twenty-two cents back this past year. But they're not our size, but they did. No one in our conference rolls back taxes. We've done that for years. And that, I'm not saying that as a criticism. I'm saying that as a source of pride. I'm, I'm proud that our, our board has done that. And we've done it because we don't want to take more than we, than we have to have. But what I'm saying, and, and I don't get a vote on the matters, that's why I think it's good that we're talking about this now because you guys have things to think about, is we need it now.
Janelle, when we say we roll back, we understand what we're talking about, okay? When the public hears we rolled back taxes, they're thinking, well, there's a reduction of what we charged from the year before. But we're not rolling back from what last year was. We're asking to increase, but to roll back from what the ceiling is. And so, it's kind of like, it's kind of a play on words. A lot of people don't understand that. So we say, oh, we rolled it back twenty-one cents, but we raised it five cents or ten cents. And so, last year, we did raise taxes, even though we had a lower rollback. Last year, taxes went up. And so, when we tell the public that we're not going to raise taxes or we, we rolled back the taxes, it's almost deceptive to them because they don't, they're not understanding that. They think, oh, they're lowering our taxes. We're not lowering their taxes. We're actually going to increase their tra, taxes.
I think that's another good reason as to why they have these conversations like this, because it is confusing. But I think we would all agree, every year, even in your homes, things cost more than what they did last year and the year before and the year before that. And, and it's just, you know, that's, I think patrons understand that because it's in their homes. And so I think it's good that we educate the community because it is hard to understand in that respect. I, I totally agree with you.
And, and when this was adopted in the nineteen nineties, property values-
Nineteen eighty.
Was it nineteen eighty? Property values weren't anywhere near what they are today. And you look at people who are on fixed incomes and social security, this is a big deal for them.
When you look back at the tax levies just historically, you know, we're talking about this incidental tax levy. You know, back in like two thousand and two, it was like one point six eight. You know, currently this year, it's three point oh four nine nine, you know? So between like twenty years ago and now, it's, it's doubled. Not, not just the numbers, the percentage has doubled on the incidental tax levy. And you look at the debt service levy too, that's increased astronomically. So when you look at the total tax rate, you know, back from twenty years ago, it was like, you know, three point two seven, three point two six, three point two six. And by the time you get to like, you know, ten years ago, it's like three point five, three point four, you know, three point four, three point six.
You know why that is. That's because things cost more. And it also means, as we mentioned earlier, we're getting less money from the state and from the federal government. So it's being funded through local school districts. And that's why I think it's important to watch, you know, state legislation to make sure we're looking to see the impact that some of the decisions that are being made at the state level are going to impact us.
Currently, total tax is like four point one seven, pretty close, four point one six nine nine, which is, you know, pretty close to the highest it's been. And it's been at that level. It dropped a little bit back in two thousand and twenty-one, but it's been at that level essentially since the twenty eighteen, nineteen tax year. And so, you know, it's, it's historically at a high percentage, not just total dollars, which, which is, it is a historically high total dollars, but, but the percentage of taxation is quite, quite a bit higher than it's been. You know, it's gone up, you know, by, you know, a thirds, just percentage-wise, since like twenty years ago. I just thought it brings some perspective to it.
Neil answered me. Yeah. So here's what he said. He said, from what I remember, a, a large portion was used for the HVAC work to pay off the leaf, lease service financing. The past few years, and I'm not sure if he's talking about Hannibal or if he's talking about other places, but he says, the past few years, there have been a lot of new staff that was hired, and I believe the COVID funds were used for some of that. Hence why the funds weren't there to pay off the lease. And then I found our communication, and he said, um, we talked about, because as you know, I've, I've been very upfront. I've asked for an audit from the state, um, two times, and had been turned down both times from DESI. And Susan knows, I've talked to her about it. And he said, um, he said that he couldn't find anything nefarious, but only Rich, and he's referring to Rich Stilly, could answer, really answer to where those funds went. It is possible they paid bills, but the record-keeping was poor enough that, and I said Neil, because that's who was talking, that's who was making the quote, Neil was not sure where they were paid out. Is that the same text you were talking about, right?
Yeah. Can you read me the first part of the text that you sent me, though?
Uh, Neil, it was the ninety percent said even, Neil said, Neil has been wonderful in this situation. That's when I was talking about COVID funds. He said, told me that he thought a forensic audit would be appropriate because we were talking about that. He said he thought over ninety percent of Esser funds went to salaries, which is not wise, because those were created positions, which we had talked about and said, no, that wouldn't be wise. And that's what Susan had said. But that's, but was not sure about the other ten percent. He said that he couldn't find anything nefarious, but only Rich could really answer to where those funds went. It is possible they paid bills, but the record-keeping was poor enough that Neil, Neil, was not sure where they were paid out. And that's with LJ Hart. And I've asked for audits twice, and DESI has said to me, and I've got my records, I kept all my records, that they were aware of situations, but they did not think it was warranted at this time. So I've called for it twice.
And I've asked our state, our local auditor. I've asked Locat. I've asked DESI. And if you guys wanted to, that we could do it, but they, I was advised not to. They said it would be a waste of our money, but we could do it.
Yeah. Any other discussion, real quick? Before we get to take in comments, I, I want to apologize for how I'm dressed. I have a skin issue and I can't wear socks and I can't wear pants. So I know it's funny, but it's not funny to me because I'm itching like crazy. So if you see me scratching my legs, that, that's what it is. But I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that I just didn't dress professionally because of the, because everybody was here. Any other discussion from the board? Okay. Patron comments. Per Board Policy two point two, during the patron comment portion of the agenda, patrons may address the board on those items that are specific to the approved agenda or who have properly required to appear before the Board of Education. We will allow three minutes for anybody that wants to speak. If you want to speak, you come forward, just state your name, and you're welcome to talk about the, anything that is on the agenda. Come forward. Yeah, it, this is not going to, we're going to go back and have to digest, hold on, I won't start the clock. We have to digest a lot of different things. So we're going to listen, take in the information, write everything down, because we have a lot of things to think about before we make a, any type of vote. And my assistant, Janelle, is going to start the clock because I'm not good at that. All right. It's all you.
My name is Melissa Coggo, and I just got a couple statements I want to make. I'm taking in the information tonight, just like you guys. I can definitely sympathize to making touch, tough cuts on a budget with millions of dollars, I think you all know, especially when it comes to the services for the city of Hannibal and for citizens and our constituents. I love this town. I serve this town every day. I can relate to giving your employees low raises. We got one percent this year. What I would like to say is sometimes, and I can understand wanting to give the very less education that you can, and I think you do, to the best of your ability. And I can understand not wanting to cut a budget in places where it's going to be emergency service, police and fire. I, and I know you don't want to cut teachers, and I don't want, no, you don't want to mess with the unions. I've done that too. However, we have a entire community that is struggling right now. The average, median income for the city of Hannibal is fifty-two thousand dollars. The largest share of households in Hannibal have an income, income of between sixty and seventy-five thousand dollars. I did just some quick figuring sitting there with what I was given tonight. If you take an average citizen with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and let's say seventy-five thousand dollars worth of personal property, talk about raising their taxes by about a hundred and ninety dollars. I know that doesn't sound like a lot to some of us or some, but it sounds like a lot. There's a lot of us struggling throughout the community. And I want you to keep in mind that sometimes making some tough cuts might be for the best as a community as whole, because we do have a great community here that really is struggling. Also wanted to make the board well aware that the Board of Public Works for the, is anticipating about a fifteen percent increase in October on electric for the citizens of Hannibal. So there's a lot going on outside of here with this community, where our citizens are struggling, where people are losing their houses for not paying taxes, where they're having their electric shut off. So I just want to be, please ask you to be mindful when you're considering all of the information that you have to consider, that there is a big community out there that is counting on you all, counting on us, and we have to make the best and hardest decisions that we can. But at the end of the day, we've got to protect the community. And right now, things are just bad. So I understand them being bad for the school, for the city, for everything else. So just please, when you're thinking about this information, keep in mind that there's a lot going on outside this school district, inside the city of Hannibal and the counties of Marion and Rawls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mus. Good to see you again. Coming forward.
Hello, I'm Bob Cohen. And first of all, I want to thank Susan for a lot of good information you passed on. However, in your position, you've got to advocate for one side. I understand that. I reiterate what some of the others here have said tonight. When it came to the bond issue, you promised no tax increases with one hand. On the other hand, now you're saying, we need more money. We're going to take money. We're going to increase your taxes. Excuse me, increase your taxes. Businesses, when they have shortfalls, have to come up with the, face a lot of the same issues that the school board and the city are facing. What they have to do, either cut back on staff, they have to close some of them. We've had some businesses in City of Hannibal that have had to close because of all the increased prices that there are. Families have faced a lot of the same issues. And a lot of them don't have help. And a lot of those families in Hannibal are on a fixed income. They're retired, like I am. We don't have any help from any place. Struggling, the families struggling to meet ends, have, have ends meet right now. And if you increase their taxes, that's going to be even worse for them. The last thing I wanted to address, the quality education is not based upon how much money is spent or received per student. It's based on the teachers and the parents, the households they come from. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McGregor, I think you have, we're next. Although you do have to state your name, even though I thought it was Mr. McGregor. Yeah.
It's Roger McGregor now. Just a quick review of history. In probably two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, Hannibal Public Schools went out to the community and asked for a Prop C waiver. At that time, we informed the community very clearly of what Prop C waiver was and how that rollback at the time, if we raised taxes, we had to roll back the amount that we raised. So we were in a downhill spiral, if you all remember that several years ago. We passed that with overwhelming support from the community, that we would roll back taxes when we could. But there may be a time when we weren't able to do that. So the information, the community got the information. Now, maybe they forgot it in that time or not, but it was given out very clearly. And that was a very high percentage pass rate on that tax, on the Prop C waiver. So information was given out, and I'm not going to sit here and argue all the other stuff, but the information was given out and the community supported that, knowing that at some point, there may have be a time when that tax levy rollback could not be there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Daniel Miller. I just had a, just clarifying question. I think it goes a little bit with what Roger said. So the three dollars and seventy-five cents in the document, that is what the taxpayers have approved for the school to set the operating levy at? Is that?
Sometimes. Sometimes historically, yes, there was. I was talking to the Attorney's Office prior to nineteen ninety-six. That's far as back there, like, I'm trying to-
Okay. So, so from, from my perspective, that is like, that is what the taxpayers have given the school latitude to tax up to. And, and kind of like what, what Roger said before, like, we have given, like, we, we've put it on sale. We've given a discount for, for years. And so, I think, like, has been stated, that's, that's a great thing when, when we're able to. But if the taxpayers have approved that we can tax up to this amount to provide, to provide a quality education to the students within our district, I don't think we're misrepresenting the, the taxpayers or the voters or anyone to tax up to what they have already voted to allow us to use, from my perspective. I understand that that might hurt sometimes if you expect it to be a certain amount, but if it's already been approved and voted on by the people that are paying the taxes, then I, I don't necessarily see a problem with that. And I think if we're trying to move forward, be fiscally responsible, build the budget up, having the tools to do that, if we say we need to, we need to, you know, increase the, our revenues and we need to, or not revenues, but our savings and be fiscally responsible, I think we're kind of kneecapping ourselves a little bit if we don't use what the voters have already given us in terms of what is allowable to tax so that we can operate effectively.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Mike Wood. I just have one real quick question. I, I've been coming to some of the board meetings. Has there been board training? It's always DVD that I've seen. Has there been board training yet? It's always DVD that I've seen, has there been board training yet? All right, got it, it's needed.
I agree. Anybody else? Come on.
Uh, my name's Anna Lemon, um, I first want to say thank you to the board members that I've had really good discussions with through emails, um, phone calls. Um, also Ted, thank you for the information that you've given. A couple of questions, um, when I was going through the 88 pages of expenditures, um, I did notice the parent pay program, that it was not at a loss, is that correct? That I was seeing that, that we, we didn't, um, have a loss in that program?
No, the parent pay program cost us, with all the expenses that cost us.
Then the revenue we pulled in specifically from those tuition, I guess, is what I would say.
Okay, so there was a loss, so I was just not lining those two numbers up correctly.
Yeah, the tuition did not cover the expenses of all the staff and the equipment that was involved with that.
Do you know approximately what that was? I guess I can ask some more.
I don't know, I could tell you for next year, it's still about $60,000 short from the tuition, even though we raised the tuition, so it's still, it's still costing, I think it was over 100, but I'm, I'm gonna have to look up the number, I don't have it on top of my head.
So anywhere between 60 to 100,000?
130, I think, somewhere in there.
130 is what the loss was? Okay, and then, on the lease purchasing, so we just paid off the one lease, we have two leases that are left with, that are going to have a balloon payment, um, in maybe 2027. Um, when we do these lease purchases, um, we put, and correct me if I'm wrong, we put property up, like, up the district property up for collateral on those lease purchases? Is that correct? Or no?
Those are in place, but I can't answer that, I'm not sure exactly how those were written up, I'll have to do some more research on that, do you know, do you? I'm not sure.
So we, we take part of the property, possibly of the district, and then we do a lease purchase, so then we just rent it back from whoever purchases that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Well, we lease it back from, we, we have a bank that give, borrows money, we borrow money from a bank, and then we give the district collateral.
Yes.
And then if we don't make that, then that bank gets that part of the.
Yes, and I, and I, I'm not sure if it's off our reserves, or if it's off the property, I'll have to do a little more, like I said, those were in place before I started.
Those were just a couple of questions regarding that. Um, and then, yes, we did talk about, I think it was in 2016, it was very clear that we had, um, rolled back or kept from going to that debt ceiling, and I think that's great, I think everybody agrees that that's great. We also are coming off of a school, uh, budget that we had a very large shortfall, and I think addressing shortfalls prior to then trying to increase taxes is warranted. And so just looking at, again, the previous budget as to where we were going over, which I have been going through that, um, but also trying to look at, why are we getting to these shortfalls? What programs, what part of the district is creating those? And then looking at that so that we are good stewards of the already money funds that are coming from the taxpayers to the district.
Let you finish that thought, and that's your three minutes.
Um, yeah, oh wait, I did want to say one thing about the grade of our district, we're looking on the state website. I hope this is not true, but it looks like our district on an A, B, C, D, F, that we're at a D. I hope that's not true, but it is definitely something to look at. So we do want to provide quality education, but a D is not.
Email me that. Yeah, email me that site.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Hi, babe.
Hi, I'm Vicky Dudding, and, you know, I've listened to everything everybody's said, and I would be the first to agree, nobody wants taxes raised. However, inevitably, sometimes that has to happen. And the job of the school board, the administration, of all the teachers, is to provide the best education we can for our students. If that means that we have to raise our taxes, we're gonna have to raise our taxes. And, you know, my fear is, if we don't, cuts can be made, cuts will be made because we've had to do it before. I worked here a long time, and we've, we've always done what we had to do. But who pays the price the most? Are the students from families of poverty that are already underserved all over the state and all over our country, and I think that needs to be remembered when you start talking about this.
Thank you, Vicky, thank you. Anybody else? Come, oh, got Mr. Lemon first, he beat you to this, he beat you to the punch.
Guys, uh, James Lemon, uh, Anna's husband, and I'm gonna say something that's probably not gonna be popular in my home, but if you have to raise taxes, you have to raise taxes. Uh, I, I think that's a given. However, my concern is, I would sit here and listen, is, what I'm not hearing is that there's been a full analysis of your budget to figure out every place where you could adjust your budget, and telling you all exactly what the amount you would save with each particular option. Because what I think is, if you have to raise, you have to raise, but you should raise no more than you absolutely have to raise. And the only way you can tell that is if staff goes absolutely through the budget and figures out exactly what everything will relate to, and then you all, because I trust every one of you, that you want what's best for this district, that you will go through and only raise the taxes as much as they need to be raised, and you will cut the budget so that it can be cut. And my concern is this, I, we have got a wonderful relationship with our school district and the taxpayers, that's what they are, taxpayers, voters, not patrons, taxpayers. You've got a wonderful relationship where they've always trusted you, and they've done, taken care of things. If you lose that trust, you're gonna lose the ability to get bond issues passed, and I'm very concerned that you are going to lose that trust if you raise taxes and the public is not really confident that that's what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon, and I, I think you make a wonderful point in that there probably can be some compromise. It may not have to go all the way up to where it could possibly be. Maybe we can look at some different things, I think that's an excellent point. So, yes ma'am, in the back, come on forward, oh, my glasses on, so I may know you, but I can't see your face. Yeah, I do know you as you get closer.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm late, I had to open my pants.
Yeah.
Actually, Laura Meyer, sorry, I was driving my kids around, and we were listening in the car, so I had to stop by and just, you know, so they didn't, weren't the only ones who had to hear everything I had to say. Um, some of the, some of the things, like, words are important. I know everybody's worried that the community is mad because whether this was misrepresented or misunderstood, or misreminded of them, words matter. So, one of the things to, when you're talking, because you're gonna be talking to people, um, this is based on the assessed value of your house, not the appraised value of your house, and that is a very important thing that everybody needs to know. It does not matter how much you pay for your house, it's how much the assessor says that they're gonna tax based off of it, that's a lot lower than what you pay for your house, and that's very important, because a lot of people are in here are doing math based off of what they think their appraised value is, or what's estimate is on the computer, and that's not the value. So, that's an important thing, you need to put that in your talking notes when you're talking with people. Other things are, um, it's, it's in writing, I sent the message to my husband, who's been here for the whole thing, and Blaine, I'll call you and say, yes, you can raise my taxes, absolutely. Um, I'm sorry, I don't remember who spoke first, but I was listening in, and she made a great point about, um, our community, and everything's tight, money's tight, and families are struggling, so are our kids. And the public schools are the catchnet for those kids. We feed them, we give them places to go, we give them things to do, we give them education so that they can go do better things, so that they can make money and pay your own taxes later. Uh, but the thing is, we still gotta look out for those kids. And something that on this board that I hear every month, because I, I have four kids, I'm always somewhere, and I can't come here, um, but I'm listening online every month, and one thing that keeps coming up is what your voters think, and what your constituents think, and honestly, you guys are the school district. That's whose best interest you have at heart, not the people that voted for you, not the taxpayers. The actual people in the school district are where your interest lies. That's the office that you ran for. And man, it's watching us.
Thanks, Laura.
Yep.
As you got closer, I wrapped, I just did, so that was good. All right, come on up, Mr. Bros.
Mark Bros, um, I just want to say, wow, 40-plus people in a tax rate hearing. Um, we didn't have six total in 13 years I was on the board.
Yeah.
So, thank you for coming, thank you for taking an interest. Uh, yeah, it's just an interesting observation, uh, I think it's great people came tonight to learn, there's a lot to learn. Uh, I'm not gonna advocate any particular position, but just consider a few things, and this isn't gonna flow real well, but I was just taking notes as we were listening in, taking all the discussion. Reserves at 4.75%, that's alarming. 3% is a distressed school district, there's no room for margin there. You need to really think about that. Uh, when Prop C was passed 10-plus years ago, we worked as a board to get to 20 to 25%, which was recommended. We got there. That put us in a position to roll back the tax rate. Just keep in mind, rolling back the tax rate is not necessarily reducing your taxes. So, I'll explain that in a minute. Regarding assessed valuation of tax rates, did you know you can have a flat tax rate and actually see a higher tax bill? Does anybody know why? It has to do with your assessed valuation, that's correct. And what, what do you control with the assessed valuation? Nothing. That's from the assessor's office, that's not the value of the property in your school district. You guys passed a preliminary budget in June. In September, you're gonna pass the final budget. Unless you plan on making significant changes to your preliminary budget, you need to set an operating levy to support the preliminary budget. Again, not supporting the budget you pass with taxes is fiduciary failure, which is 100% on the board, it's not on anybody sitting over here, or any of the staff that's on the board. This is a two, two-year decision, you can't catch up next year. If state funding is withheld, or assessed valuation goes down next year, you will have a huge hole in your budget. You already had one this past year, because it was an odd year, if you remember. For the record, and I think it already was stated, about half of your, half, half of your budget's from local taxes, 10% from federal, the rest from state. Everything I hear from state organizations that I'm a part of is that we'll be okay in this next budget year, but the following budget year, revenues are gonna be a problem at the state level. So you can expect withholdings. Will your 4.75% carry you? I think that's doubtful. And you won't have the opportunity to adjust your tax or levy to get there. This is a board decision. Everybody, including your financial advisor, your auditor, and the state are recommending not to roll back. Why not follow that advice for this tax cycle, and evaluate the operating levy once reserves are where they need to be? That's how this board has operated for decades. Okay. I'm gonna finish with this. Did you want, do you want a great school district with great teachers, or do you want to try to limp by? Who suffers? Our kids do, keep that in mind when you make your decision. You know, being a board member is about balancing the concerns of your patrons and the needs of our children. You're charged with the stewardship of their education, and that may not always make everybody happy. So when we talk about promises, factor in the promises of the children and the community too. And I don't know where you guys are at with training, uh, but the mandatory state training has a finance component to it. Who's been through that training? It's your fiduciary responsibility to understand what is going on, not the superintendent or other people. You own this decision, do your job.
Thank you, sir. Next? Anybody? Nope, I got one. And Kyle, come up, I beat you, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
I can sit down.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Kyle Tocheck? Um, I just have a few quick questions. Um, I would kind of second on what Mr. Lemon said. You know, nobody ever wants to raise taxes, uh, but sometimes you have to, you know, that, that's, that's a reality. But one of the things that, that I'm curious about, uh, last year there was a, a budget that showed a balanced budget, or pretty close to one. Um, there's actually a typo in the budget, so it's balanced in one spot and not in another, but have, have, has there been an analysis done at where we're over budget and where we had shortfalls? And has that been addressed?
Yes.
What are those?
Well, the majority of.
Categorically, obviously, not line by line.
Majority of issues last year, um, there was some master funds that were drawn down, or budgeted for last year, that had actually been drawn down in the prior year. Um, so those funds had been exhausted. And then we had some unexpected additional expenses last year, for our insurance went up over 20% due to all of the storm damage, and that's actually gonna be, uh, happening again this year, they told us, and that's been reflective in the budget, another increase for that. So, looking through those individual areas where we had, um, increases, we had a lot of, um, staffing or salary codes that needed to be corrected from a variety of things, and I, I, I don't know how to say it, I was, Susan and I have been working on that, I've been working with our financial advisor with different people around the state to look through the areas where we had over just, um, supply codes, like, just different areas like that. We have adjusted supplies to be more, for different buildings, to be more accurate. So for example, some of our smallest elementaries had, um, much higher, uh, supply per student than some of the other buildings. So just looking at every individual expenditure code that we were over, uh, literally line by line, and I've had some people ask, I've sent them out, uh, if you've looked at the revenue codes or the expenditure codes, there is a lot of them. So, um, just looking through all those individual lines and trying to find out where we were over, and making adjustments where they need to be, and as we talked about, putting those, um, well, yeah. I don't know if that answers your question.
Did you guys meet your revenue goals?
Did we meet our revenue goals last year?
Yes, so your budget was 48,500, or 600,000. Did you meet those last year?
We, um, I, we were over in some areas, we actually had some supplements coming from the state, and, uh, after the budget amendments, um, you know, there was the shortfall. So we ended up spending about 1.4 million, I think, was the difference from the original 3.9 over. We, we had to spend about 1.4 million out of reserves, so, uh, no, we didn't have enough revenues to cover everything, and that's why.
Okay, so, the previous audit had $56 million in cash disbursements, but you had a bunch of surplus of just shy of 5.5 million. Has the board analyzed what happened at, at a detailed level? Because before, I, kind of piggybacking on what some of these other comments are, you do have a fiscal, a fiduciary responsibility to make sure you have enough revenue covering expenses, but we also have to, as a board, you do have an obligation to the taxpayer if you want our trust, and if you want future bond issues to pass. Uh, so, you also have a responsibility to make sure that you're being responsible with the money that you have. Has the board gone through, or will the board go through and analyze what happened between the budgets and what happened between the surplus the previous year of 5.5 million to a shortfall this year before you make this decision? Because that's a key component of it, if you have to raise rates to cover it, you have to. But if there's reasonable ways that we can balance the budget without making unnecessary cuts, maybe that should be looked at first, but I think the board should at least inform themselves about exactly what happened, and why we went from a 5.5 million dollar surplus to, uh, shortfall.
I definitely have been doing exactly what you said. Exactly, because that's what you have, that's what you have to do. You do. I agree.
Sorry, no, that's fine, I'm done.
Thank you, Kyle. Come on up, Mr. Brown.
I'm Donna Brown, and I didn't come prepared to speak. I don't have a bunch of notes, but I did bring, I hear a lot of talk about retired people not being able to afford supporting our school. Gary Brown and I are both retired. And I took, we live at the corner of Brookside and Sunset. You pass our house if you go to the Y. We live in a modest home, I like to think that we probably represent middle-class Hannibal. And I looked at the paperwork, and for less than $10 a month, I am able to support you in your increase. I'm also an informed. I'm also an informed electorate. I read my ballot, I follow what I'm given, I knew what I was voting for, I supported it one hundred percent. And then to know that when Roger brought up the 2015 rollback that we did, we did do that as an electorate of the Hannibal School District. And you have to understand, when you keep talking about how much it has gone up, you have to understand, are you saying that your medical bills haven't gone up by the same percent? Are we saying that our gas prices, our home insurance, everything goes up? But we don't have the option to close our doors. We have to move forward. Maybe there's been mistakes made in the past, but we have to look to the future. We have to make it go from here on. But what I wanted to say to you, you keep bringing up retired people, it's gonna cost Gary Brown and I less than ten dollars, nine dollars and forty-seven cents. And I think we can afford that for the benefit of our children.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Anybody else?
Well, the middle, the middle-class people like you were talking about, those, you guys have owned your house how long?
Forty-two years.
Okay, see the difference there? People that just bought their home.
Can you state your name, please?
Uh, my name is Ladonna Hampton. So, the middle-class and people who are just now buying their homes are people who are renting. This cost is gonna be passed on to them. And when you say that you're trying to protect the kids, well, what happens when that parent can't afford to live there or pay their rent or their utilities and stuff? Well, once the utilities are turned off, those children are removed from the home. You know what I'm saying? So you're not protecting the families. And all the people I've talked to, I've talked to one person that's like, yeah, count me in, I want my taxes raised. Okay, you're talking about the few people that have owned their home for forty, fifty years, and maybe they do have that. But the newer people are paying higher than that, a whole lot higher. Okay, and the young couples that have these kids, they're paying quite a bit. And it's gonna be a hundred, maybe a couple hundred dollars, or not ten dollars, and stuff. Because like, back when I bought my first house back in the nineties, yeah, the house was forty thousand dollars. Okay, so my taxes weren't much. My payment was three hundred and fifty dollars. But you know, that's not the way it is today. These houses are four hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand if you wanna live in the really bad area, which is where a lot of people live and stuff. And those taxes are very expensive for those people, those people can't afford them. And their kids, once they can't afford them, then they're gonna be out on the street, so therefore you're not protecting the children. I feel like there should be an audit of this school board so that we can find out where all the money is going. That would comfort a lot of us so that we know that something good is happening and stuff. And I know you say you don't wanna spend the money on it, but I think it needs to so that the people in this community can feel good about what you're doing here. And I don't think, you know, like, if we're in a family and we own, I mean, we're paying for stuff, we don't buy stuff we can't afford, okay? And you have to keep a budget. But yeah, you guys just keep spending and spending, and you're not staying under a budget because every year you're raising, or you're adding more to, or whatever you're doing, I don't, that's what we wanna know. We'd like to see where it went. Then we'll feel better about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
I'm Donna Gooden. I am a county collector. So I get a lot of people who come in and complain about their taxes. I wish any of you would come dork for me in November, December. You wouldn't do this. Um, I have a record number of houses going into the tax sale this year because people can't afford to pay their taxes. I sent a record number of, um, tax information to the state so, because people can't pay their personal property either, and that's something, when you do this, I do wish you would put on their personal property and real estate, because a whole lot of people think it's only on real estate, not the personal property too. The tax ceiling was set over thirty years ago. The people who voted for that are not the people who vote now. Um, the 2015 rollback, I remember that. There was talk of the state taking over the school. It was a dire situation. I think that's part of the reason that that got taken care of. I have hard information here where the assessed value has gone up every year, and the school tax rates have gone up almost every year, although Palmyra has had the same tax rate since 2013. Um, I would just like to know, too, I also have your old's budget where the money being spent each year, I think the past two or three years, you've overspent by over five million dollars on the budget, and that money has come from somewhere else. Um, if I look through, I can see where, but I'd like to know why that is, why you guys aren't setting budgets and staying with it. And, you know, you think that fifty or a hundred dollars a year isn't much to some people. It's everything to some people. They just cannot afford it. So I do hope you take that into consideration. I've talked, I've talked to many, many taxpayers, and it's, this is a big increase for them on top of everything else that's been going up, and I sure hope you don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. On something, on Ross County. Um, when you say DESI refuses to do the audit, why do they make that decision?
Well, I don't know why DESI does it, but they, uh, pass it on to other people, and they go back to me and, uh, sent me an email and said that it was not necessary, and it was something that, uh, they really didn't wanna do, that they would, uh, talk to, uh, our school district and talk to the people that were in charge. So I assume they do that and have done that.
But if the public is asking you to do that?
I've asked twice.
So, I mean, why does DESI do that?
I don't know. I can't answer that. I, I don't, I, I don't really, I don't work for DESI, so I don't know why they just refuse to do that.
I'm not asking why they refuse. Is there no other?
I don't, I don't know.
Is there no other avenue besides DESI?
Well, I, I'm assuming there would be other avenues to do it, and we've talked about those.
Susan Swisher, this is related to what Andrew, about the audit. Um, here a few weeks ago, I was wondering, 'cause, you know, we had, a lot of us had heard that there might be an audit. And so I called Scott Fitzgerald's office and didn't talk to him, but I was directed to talk to a lady who is, um, an auditor, and she informed me that at this time, and I don't know if it's, she's made any decisions or not, that she was doing an investigation of the Hannibal Public Schools.
Right.
And was looking at all the documents that had been sent to her so far. And, you know, she's gonna be the one, not DESI, it's not DESI. It's, uh, the state auditor, so she.
I know that DESI did send.
She's gonna be the one that decides if an audit is.
I know that DESI did send them something.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
But it's, you know, DESI's not the one that would do the audit, it's, it's the state, you know, Scott Fitzgerald's office.
Well, they passed it on, they passed my on. It, it's, for all intents and purposes, it's a whistleblower type of report. That, that's what it's called.
So she told me that she was, you know, and I don't know if she's finished her investigation or not, I don't know if.
I have, I had not heard back from them.
So she was gonna be the, be, she was gonna decide whether or not an audit was warranted. So just for everybody's information, that's the information I have.
Thank you.
For what it's worth.
Next?
Name's Chuck Todd, Pastor Grace Covenant Baptist Church. Been part of this community for a good while. Both my girls went through Hannibal Public Schools, we had pretty good teachers, and we're pretty satisfied with the education we got. I wanna remind you people, I choose how much I give to my church, and I choose how much I give to other things, but I don't get to choose how much I give for taxes. Those are forced extractions. They're confiscated from me and distributed as the government sees fit. I think if you did a little poll among people, a fresh poll, you'd find out that there's not a mood for a tax increase. People are going to the grocery store and figuring on spending thirty bucks, and it's forty bucks. Gasoline is high, everything's high, there are a lot of people hurting, and I say amen to what Donna Gooden just told us. And those are some facts. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. I think it's time to tighten up the belt, look at all other means before you raise the taxes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Mr. McGregor again?
One more time, all right, McGregor. Palmyra's tax levy is three dollars and forty some cents worth, three, their tax levy on operating is twenty-nine cents higher than ours. We keep bringing up Palmyra, hasn't raised anything. Their tax levy's been higher than ours, not counting debt service, but the operating fund for a long time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call. All right, seeing nobody else, I need a motion for adjournment, please.
I'm to adjourn the regular meeting and call the closed session of the Board of Education for the purpose of discussing legal action law and district and scholastic correlation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals including records of individual examination scores as provided by section six one EVO, my chapter two one, paragraphs one and six of Missouri revised statute. Those to be admitted to the closed session will be Susan Johnson, Ted Hanson, and Megan Carl.
This requires a roll call vote?
I second.
This requires a roll call?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys, for coming.